Because this most recent renewal that happened today didn't even come before city council, right?
No, king shit.
Yeah, absolutely. No, it's true.
Don't apologize for cursing on this channel.
It's true.
You don't have to apologize for cursing on this channel.
If I were a king and I wanted to ignore people, yeah, absolutely not. If I were a king and I wanted...
No, fuck the mayor. Thank you so much for taking the time to meet with me today. I really appreciate it.
No, thank you. I'm excited. It's a pleasure to meet you both.
How long have you been a city councilperson?
Uh, two years. I was elected in, um, July of 2023. What we found is while council members rejected the contract, and I wish I could remember these dates because it actually is important now that I think about it, council members rejected the contract. And I think it's important for us to talk about our council as a body because we hear all the time that it was a 12-0 vote. And it was. But there were members of council who had moral clarity when it came to the dangers of the Flock contract, and there were folks who were actually going to vote in support of the contract. They had figured out pretty quickly, the mayor's office and these council members, that we had enough votes to kill the contract. That's then when the mayor stepped in and told those folks who were going to vote in support, vote down the contract. So I don't want anyone to be misguided about what the ideologies may be for council members as it pertains to public safety, because there are council members who don't see the dangers of the contract, but they just happen to be able to benefit from that positive press, if you will, of council members coming together and saying, "We shouldn't do this."
So you had something excellent that you said before we started recording that I wanted to hit on. We were talking about the protest recently and focusing on federally versus locally.
Yeah.
And I wanted to give you a chance to go over that again.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. And I often say this to my constituents, I always want them to pay attention to what's happening federally, but I want them to figure out how that translates locally. And one of the reflections that I had recently is that we had a lot of folks show up for the no kings protest, and I love that for them, like, keep showing up and to make sure that longer-term strategy is attached to something politically, right? And I think one of the opportunities that we have is to be able to identify the kings at the federal level, but also to be able to identify the kings and the castles locally within our cities. And so when I give you that example about the mayor's office, who was able to circumvent council having any authority over the Flock contracts, that's king behavior. And so we have to be able to name that as king behavior, because we pay attention to the federal kings, but like, who are the local kings in our communities? Our governor often plays king in our communities as well. And these are the folks who often will then be elevated into other positions, and then they start doing this because they have more reach, more resources, more opportunity to harm more communities more vastly. And so I just want us to pay attention to all the kings, not just the one at the federal level, but the ones we live with locally in these castles in our cities.
I appreciate that. So the question that I'm gonna get from my audience the most, and I've tried, I've been getting, I've got less than 4,000 emails over the past month and a half since I've gone over this.
Wow.
And I've been trying to actually come up with responses to all of them based on what type of, where you live. They're always gonna ask, "I saw this camera went up in my area. I didn't know what's happening," because most people, they work eight or 12 hours a day. They don't get involved with city council meetings and everything else. What do they do when they say, "I want to get this out of my city, where do I start?" So I give them answers from my perspective, which is, you know, laptop repair person, LARPing is a lobbyist at the federal level for other items, but you have a much better insight into this. Like, what kind of answers would you give people that actually are willing to put in the time, the effort, and the work to get that stuff out of their community? Where do they start? What should they do?
Beautiful, beautiful question, and I'm glad you asked. So in East Colfax in particular, we had, even after the Flock contract had come to city council and we had voted that down, there's still a separate process for getting the cameras within our city. And you are notified as a council member, as well as notification is given to our registered neighborhood associations. And I received...
When you mean by getting the cameras, you mean like installing them?
Like the actual installation of the camera. Yeah. And so I was notified, as well as my registered neighborhood association, and my registered neighborhood association was like, "Absolutely not. You're not putting these in our communities." And so we sent to, um, to the city, opposition to the installation of those cameras. Actually had two that were being proposed in my council district in particular. And so that's how you can, how folks can do it here within the city and county of Denver, if they're connected to their registered neighborhood associations, or if they're connected to their council members. But reach out to me directly. I love talking to my constituents. In addition to that, for Denver in particular, because we're under such strong mayoral control, you're gonna have to put that pressure on the mayor's office to say, "Turn the Flock cameras off. Don't put more cameras up and get these ones out of our communities that already exist." And that has to come from the administration. You can put the pressure on city council members, and they can put the pressure on the mayor, but really, when you think about the strategy, it has to be us as a council body putting pressure on the mayor, as well as citizens putting pressure on the mayor and say, "We do not want the surveillance in our city. I don't want to be watched all the time."
Because this most recent renewal that happened today, it didn't even come before city council, right?
No, king shit.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Absolutely.
No, it's true.
Don't apologize for cursing on this channel.
It's true.
You don't have to apologize for cursing on this channel.
If I were a king and I wanted to ignore people, yeah, absolutely not. If I were a king and I wanted...
No, fuck the mayor. I added up, one of the top-voted comments on this, because I made this list like last minute in between doing work, what to do, what people can do. And it was, you know, here's what to say to the attorney general, here's what to say to the justice committee, here's the Denver City Handbook, here's the Charter, here's where it says that you cannot just lower the price by $1 and then get it through. And then like, the top-voted comment in this video was something along the lines of, and I'm paraphrasing here, it was, you know, "You told him to go to the district attorney." Just so you know, the deputy district attorney is his wife. He probably, he'd probably just enjoy it if she put him in handcuffs anyway. And it was like, it made me laugh, but like, it's also sad at the same time, because yeah, like, "I just told you to report him to his wife." Like, that's great.
Damn.
But like, that's why I was asking, like, what are the actionable things that somebody can go and do? Because obviously, some of the things that I gave, because I didn't understand the local politics and I didn't do the research properly, I'm sorry about that, is, I don't know what the right thing is there.
Yeah, that's fair.
It's like, what are the bright buttons to press here?
Yeah.
Because I don't really know city politics very well, especially for cities I don't live in.
Yeah. And so those are two things that you can do, is make sure your councilperson's paying attention, make sure your registered neighborhood associations are paying attention. I mean, you can push back and fight against, back against them, and know that your council members talk. So when we all looked at this list, there were a number of council members who had these, this proposal for new cameras going up in their different districts, and we all, you know, called like, "Did you, did you know this is coming into, did anyone talk to you about it?" And so you can get your council members pretty riled up as well with being like, "Hey, we don't want this in our community. We don't want to be surveilled. Um, don't allow it." Councilwoman Parady has caught the CEO having to go back on statements that they said previously that were the truth. And every time it's uncovered, it's like, "Okay, well, there was that one time." You know? "Oh yeah, there was that other one time." It's like, y'all.
There was a company called Live View Technologies that said, they wanted to do a phone call with the people against the cameras, and he's an exceptionally good salesman, like, very, he's the type of, he's the type of person that would have absolutely no guilt, like, having sex with my wife, walking out, saying nothing happened, and just taking me for a sandwich. Like, it was just very good at that. Like, if you watch the videos...
And never, may God never put that person in my life.
Or watching you.
They might be. Honestly, these similar companies are probably here.
He looks at you, he's like, "We do not do facial recognition. We'll never do facial recognition. It's not something we do." And then I just look on his website, and it's like, "How Live View helps you? What is machine learning? Machine learning is something we use, and it enables stuff like facial recognition." It's like, "It's on your FAQ."
These fools will just lie. And that's what I mean.
And they're so good at it. And this, you know, this is one thing Scott Galloway said. He said that, like, "I never meet with any of the people from Facebook, or Amazon, or Microsoft," because he writes all these books about breaking up large tech companies, he's a business professor, and he's awesome. And he says, "I never meet with them, because I know if I met with them, I would just say, 'Oh yeah, you're right. Maybe I could just, maybe we could just fix this with a little conversation over dinner.'" Because they have the money to hire the most likable, trustworthy people, and "I know that I'm gonna believe you, and then you're just gonna screw me, and I'm not gonna fall for that, so I'm just not gonna talk to you." And I didn't really understand it until I spoke to him, and it's like, he was, he was so good.
You were more convinced than me.
I was...
I didn't think he was that good. I didn't think he was that good.
He was...
Good. That's good.
But I think that's what law school trains you to do, is you just, you go up against the most likable portrayal of a defense ever, and you have to defeat it, right?
There you go.
For the everyday person and people that are not, like, constantly against opposing counsel, yeah, they're extremely convincing. And I mean, it's like, it's like a attractive narrative, right? Like, if you came into my community, and especially like in poor communities, if your car gets stolen, your life is fucked for a long time.
Correct.
Can't go to work, can't take your kids to school, have to find a way to buy a new car, and you came in and you said, "I will fix this problem for you."
And this is how I can do it?
Yeah.
Even if it's not true?
Yeah, it's a super attractive narrative. I'm not gonna tell you about facial surveillance, I'm not gonna tell you about like, all the capabilities of these cameras, I'm just gonna say a solution.
I'm just gonna tell you, I can find your car.
Yeah. And it gives like, council members a way that, to respond to their constituents.
Yeah.
Without, you know, a lot of them don't know all the technology capabilities, and Flock, of course, doesn't tell them. And so they, they think that they're helping constituents by doing so, and then, but there are council members that even after they learn all the horrible things, they still are like, "But it will get a car back."
Right. Which is very interesting, because I had the opportunity to go on a ride along with the police and was able to see this data like in real time. They don't stop cars that have been stolen. Like, that's not police work in the city and county of Denver. Like, they're not, there were a number of cars that hit for like stolen license plates.
Interesting.
Yeah, so even that is a lie, right? Even the conversation about where folks have said, "You know, we use this, this technology to, uh, to save someone who had been kidnapped in our community, and it was because of these automatic license plate readers that we were able to capture this criminal quickly." You could still do that if you want, like, you don't have to surveillance 24/7. You could still do that. But these are the stories that they tell folks who don't know, and they're empathetic to those stories, because they think, "Oh, that could be me, that could be my child, and if it is me, or if it is my child, or if it is my sister, I would want you all to use whatever resources to be able to get me back." And it's like, that's intentional, to pull on the heartstrings, so that then we can just do this thing that is actually not useful, and it is in fact harmful to you in the long term. But you believe it, because it sounds like I might benefit from it one day, you know? You get my car back, or you get my kiddo back.
It's true. Yeah, it's true. So let me shift gears a little bit. Part of what we're doing is, I really want to convey to people how important city politics is. Because everybody is very focused on the federal and state level, and like, warrantedly so, right? Like, we need to, we need to pay attention to that. But people can feel very cynical about their ability to impact state and federal levels, because their votes are comparatively less impactful, they don't have direct access to them, they're often voting on things that are completely outside of their control or wheelhouse. Whereas at the city level, multiple things make your voice better able to be heard, which is that council members often don't win by that many votes. They win by less than a thousand a lot of times. You have direct access to them.
Yeah.
In a way that you don't at a state or federal level. They're often up for reelection quite often, and they care a lot about that. And they know precisely your community and exactly what issues you're talking about. And on top of that, things that happen at the city level not only have a ripple effect to the sort of smaller cities around them, but it often signals to the state and federal legislature, after enough cities have sort of come together and addressed this issue.
That's true.
That's sort of where they grab a lot of their issues from, right? Not, not some individual in Denver who calls the state senator and says, you know, "This is my, this is my problem." So I just wanna ask you, sort of, how have you seen city politics be particularly important for you?
Yeah. I mean, if you think about it, local politics, city politics, municipal politics are incredibly important, because you feel the decisions in real time of the decisions that we're making, whether those are contracts, policies, initiatives, right? I think about our regional transportation district, which is governed by an elected board of 15. When that board decides to cut a route, a bus route, you feel that right away, right? Because it impacts your ability to take your kids to school, or to get to work, or whatever you might utilize and be reliant or dependent on that service for. That's true here in the city. Like, folks feel, when city budgets don't reflect their needs, what that looks like. So when we talk about city budgets and deficits of $250, those cuts have to come from somewhere. And oftentimes, and what we have seen historically, is that the dollars often come from the most important and crucial programs that are happening within the city. It's how we fund folks, how we fund youth in our communities, right? How we fund programs in our community that benefit the elders and the seniors living in our community. Transportation, how we fund housing, and how that gets developed. And so city politics, and I want more folks to pay attention, because it has a direct impact on your life in real time, and make your elected officials work. They're your tax dollars. Right? Like, I just, I can't say enough, people look at their paychecks and like, "Damn, they took all these goddamn taxes out of my check." Yes! And then the elected officials spend your money on stupid shit. So like, pay attention to the things that they are spending your money on, and ask yourself, "Do you want them to be spending your money in that way?" And if not, call them. Their numbers are on the, online, they have email addresses, they have staff oftentimes that can do some of this work. Make those fools work. Like, don't just let them skate and get these, these salaries and do nothing to benefit or improve your life.
Oh yeah, I love that.
That's what we see, because it's happening.
That is a great note.
Yeah, that was awesome. That was awesome.
It's happening. They're like, "Oh, make them work. That's what we pay them for. That, it's your money," you know?
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
I'm sorry that we were late and took up so much of your time, but this was amazing.
Appreciate y'all.
I love having the chance to talk to you and hope to see you again at 6.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yeah, that was awesome.
You'll be here?
Yeah, for sure.
Great. I'll be interviewing a bunch of people.
I cut.
Oh, lovely.
That's in our contract, that they can aggregate our data and use it. They have all these...
I think that's in all Flock contracts.
Yeah.
I don't know of any city that's been able to like negotiate that boilerplate Flock contract.
Right.
Which I'm noticing is because, like, this is the case in Austin, I don't know if it's the case in Denver, but a lot of city council doesn't even have access to the contract, like, until close to when they're actually voting on it.
That's usually the case here too, because we, it triggers like our time to vote, and so they hold it back from us until the last minute. But if we even vote on it, which again, the contract extension that was announced this morning, we're not voting on it, because it's another no-cost extension for four or five months. And I just wanna say that, because I know you're referencing a lot of comments about this, the mayor sat me down late last afternoon with my colleague, who has been really interested in this issue, and who also was placed on a task force that the mayor created, which was ostensibly going to create some mass surveillance policy. Unbeknownst to that task force, which has been like meeting earnestly for several months, and it has the, you know, the DA's office and the lead public defender and the independent monitor and EFF and the ACLU, everybody's there, it's like this amazing task force we've been digging in, and the mayor in the meantime was talking just to the CEO of Flock and negotiating, quote-unquote, "a different contract." And the different contract is basically just that they'll stop putting us on the state and national networks, which we could have asked for all along. I mean, that was, that was the original contract we had with them. They put us on those networks without telling us. DPD was unaware that our data was on the Flock National Network.
So DPD, just the Denver Police Department?
Denver Police Department, sorry about that.
No, wow. So they tell you after the fact?
They didn't know. So we were on there for well over a year, and it wasn't until city council noticed this contract coming through. By the way, it was on our consent agenda, so we were supposed to vote on it without any debate. We pulled it off, my office did. And in the course of that whole thing, even after our vote, is when we finally learned that we had been on the national network.
So just so I understand the consequences then, in case I missed it or somebody else missed it, but that means that the cameras that were in Denver were searchable and viewable by people outside of Denver?
Absolutely.
And then, was it not like this from the beginning, and they never told you? Or was it not like that in the beginning, but they changed it in the middle of the contract without telling you?
Second one.
Was it, okay. Yeah, so a big recurring theme on my channel are companies that change the terms of the sale after the sale, and they don't tell you that they changed the terms of the sale, or they send you an email that goes to spam from some no reply email that has a bunch of graphics and stuff, and that just gets called.
And I have, maybe they sent an email like that to the police department, I have no idea, but DPD was in fact unaware that we were on the national network, and the mayor's office was unaware that we were on the national network.
Because these are the sticking points, when people say, "Why are you not okay with this?" And like, I don't think they, they know all these little things that occur along the way. Because even if somebody thought these were a good idea, even if you're for having cameras everywhere for stopping crime, which I'm not for anyway, if somebody is, you know, wants to see police do other things to stop crime, I would not like to do business with a company that changes the terms of sale in the beginning of it, particularly when it comes to people's personal data and doesn't tell me. That's a nonstarter for me. It doesn't matter how good a relationship we had, I can't trust you at that point, even if you made this stuff free for me.
You took the words right out of my mouth. And honestly, the, it's not just, it's not just that either. This company has been dishonest repeatedly. The CEO came and did a little PR tour in Denver.
I mean, from the, from the actual get-go, like, they were using hacked data to develop their materials, like, almost from the jump.
See, I don't think I knew that, so there you go.
So what you were saying, what you were saying about lying from the get-go, I haven't followed all of them. I followed some from a different company called Live View, but I'd love to hear, because I'm ignorant of a lot of this and I'm learning as I go, what were the lies from the beginning?
Well, in Denver, I mean, over the summer, Langley came here, and he met with an assortment of council members and with, and talked to media and all these things. And so I had him, he was back here in my office, we talked for 90 minutes, and he told me just multiple things that were just not true, right? So for example, the big one, which he ended up issuing this big like medical buzz statement about online, because he also said it to Nine News, our local media outlet here, is that he said there's no federal agencies that have accounts, and that was just not true.
Yeah, they made that promise across the US, we've noticed. Like, directly to council members, that like, "We will not give access to any federal agencies."
Yeah. So here's the mayor, and he says, "Good news. I've been negotiating privately, just me and Garrett Langley, and we've come up with this much better system. You're gonna be so pleased about it. It's gonna be what we thought we had in the beginning." No, I'm not pleased about that. That is a no cost.
I had a conversation without any of you present, that you can't see the details of, and everything's fixed now. I'm sure you'll be happy with it.
Also, let's give them an opportunity to lie twice. I'm not sure.
I mean, more than twice, yeah. The company, I think that they are, like many of these new tech startups, this company grew really, really fast. And you can tell, because it's this, it's this personalized kind of company, you know, it's his company. He started it, he physically built the first camera, he's super proud of it, he's a billionaire. And you can, I, in talking to him, had this really strong sense that compared to older companies in more regulated industries where the law has kept up with the tech, they do not have the kind of internal controls. He keeps sort of referring to like these off-the-cuff decisions that he himself would make, that are again supposed to make me feel better. So for example, he told me, "This algorithm is trained by AI, and so it's not just that you can search for a plate number and it can recognize license plate font, you can also search..."
Which is kind of why AOPR is a bit of a misnomer, right? They read way more than just license.
That's such a good point.
On the features, in those features of the site, the first feature that I saw when I was looking it up was the fingerprinting feature, where if the license plate is removed, it can still tell that that's the camera. So if you can tell, if you could tell it's my car, bam, yeah, my car. If you can still tell it's my car with a license plate removed, then you're not a license plate camera.
Not only can they recognize cars, he told me, direct quote, "The camera can see anything we can see." So it can recognize anything. Now, they have then turned around and tried to block uses that would be illegal or that they might get in trouble for, and so they've blocked it from searching for particular political bumper sticker terms. I doubt they've thought of every bumper sticker that's ever existed and blocked it, but they've blocked like Trump, or Obama, or, you know, Harris, or whatever, so you can't search for bumper stickers to find people that support those elected officials, right? Or those candidates, or whatever. He also told me, again, as if to make me feel better, he's like, "Well, and I realized, my, I think his attorney, and he realized that we should really block searches for naked woman." And I was like, "Wait, wait a minute." Like, that didn't even occur to me.
How many people drive naked?
I mean, but they're, I don't know why these cameras...
They're watching, like, everything.
They have a field of view.
One second. And also, when you're saying, "Well, we're blocking specific bumper stickers," I mean, if I look at somebody, I used to run like a laptop repair company, I was in the front all the time, and I could tell who somebody voted for based on the stickers that are on their device, even if they don't have the name of it. So like, that's a misnomer, when you're saying, "We're blocking this particular data." It's kind of like when Live View was telling people that you own the data, and I say, "Whose servers is it stored on? And are we allowed to self-host it?" Because if I can't host it on my system, and it must be hosted on yours, I do not own this data. You own this data, and you can take it away at any time, and you can view it at any time. Whatever your internal policies are, I don't care, the fact that that access still exists. So when they say, "Well, we're taking away the ability to search for this bumper sticker," I mean, there's, there's a million ways for me to figure out that, and the algorithm will learn that.
And it's bizarre for that just to be from his own mind, kind of, you know, like this one guy at this massive company, that tells me that they don't have the right kind of systems in place to be doing that kind of thing more intentionally, more systematically. It's like off-the-cuff, and probably...
It's an afterthought, reactive to people's...
And they probably blocked that search, because some cop did that search.
Somebody in the chat, again, this is something I'd love to verify later. I'm a private investigator, and Flock sells Denver LPR data to private out-of-state surveillance firms.
Will you please contact me, internet person? Sarah.Parady@DenverGov.org, please. I spoke to one Flock software engineer that was gracious enough to give me some of their time. They were nervous about that, but it was super helpful to me to understand like the power of this algorithm and other things. And again, our contract allows our aggregated data to be sold, right? And do we really understand how it's aggregated, how it's denuded, any of that?
No.
No.
And that's the entire business model, right? Flock does not work if they don't share and sell data. It simply doesn't work. That's the entire appeal of it.
Right. That's exactly right.
So the notion that cities can negotiate a really fair contract with adequate safeguards and that really keeps the data local is.
A fool's errand.
A fool's errand, truly.
Yeah. And we would have to have a much different legal system to like plug into. You can't contract your way around the fact that there just aren't, we just do not have systems of accountability for these kind of companies. And if we had really rigorous, you know, all kinds of other legal provisions at local, state, federal level, these companies had to do all kinds of disclosure, they got investigated. Maybe then our little contract could kind of tag team onto that. But no, Denver's not going to write a contract that magically changes this whole data ecosystem. It's not happening.
A lot of people will ask, what are the things that I can actionably do? And I've gotten about 4,000 emails about this in the past month and a half. What are the things that people can do? Cause that's the most common question. Like what do, I don't, I saw that this was installed in my city. What do I do?
Honestly, it's as simple as sending an email. Like we read our email. We respond to people. If we get a huge number of emails about one topic, you might get like a response that we've copied and pasted, but we're going to respond to people. And that's one of the amazing things about local government actually is that we're not like congressional offices where they, they just ignore that feedback. We're small and we listen.
The real nefarious stuff, like facial surveillance and audio recording and this like super precise camera that details every, every interview essentially. That can be turned on with a software update.
Yeah.
That doesn't require.
And they reserve the right to do software updates. I mean, that's, you know, again, this contract from the point of view of a lawyer, I just read it and was like, this is ridiculous, you know?
Well, that was sort of my, you know, I'm a lawyer. I came into this thinking, of course, city council has access to the contract. Give me the contract. Let me look at it. I had no idea that they were sort of like given this at the very last minute.
And we vote on like 200 contracts some weeks.
Are you more worried about having a centralized camera network capturing every possible angle of the city or about the AI technology in search?
Well, they go ahead and go, I think more about the AI and search technology. Because that's what makes it, like, if you think about it, if these cameras were just taking a regular old photo of every plate that was going by and the cameras had no capacity to feed it or the, it wasn't being fed into an algorithm that could read it and make it searchable. Like that's the part that makes it sort of this like fingertip information where it's so easy then for, for police to go ahead and see like where you're moving throughout the city or whatever else. If they had to actually physically look at all these pictures, the pictures aren't worth that much. Which is why, you know, more old fashioned policing, like you would have had to, you're not going to go out and take a picture of every single plate. You're going to try to figure out which cars you're actually interested in. You know, do the work and then photograph them. And our fourth amendment case law is all based in that kind of world. So the massive database of plate photos would not be worth anything without the algorithmic and AI powered technology that allows us to read those so easily. I still wouldn't be a fan of it, to be clear, but that's when we used to talk about mass surveillance and get really upset about it in past decades. That's what we were talking about, right? And that seems so like banal now by comparison. It's pretty scary. That's the whole premise of the country. I mean, we have like a million, we have all these states so that they can be little co-sovereigns. Like the whole point was, we don't want any kings. We don't want this kind of power. We should know like in our bones as Americans that we do not want this much power. Like we don't want it for these corporations. We don't want it for any level of government, period, full stop. Like how have we lost track of that? I just.
I think in part it's because a lot of people just don't know. A lot of the emails that we get are, oh my God, there's 500 cameras in my city. I got no say in this. And it's part city council members that otherwise might mean well, not understanding the capabilities.
And maybe people somewhat trust that like we're paying attention and some, you know, we are, I mean, like I'm sitting here telling you this. But I would say like, don't take it for granted in any way that anyone in your local government is in fact attuned to this data aggregation stuff that may be happening.
Being lied to in their face.
Absolutely. So I don't know. I, like I said, I am literally a member of government. I'm doing the best I can over here. And my advice to everybody out there is like, no, don't just trust that, you know, we can assume that government information will be in the right hands for all time. Like that's not how it is. And a presumption of the opposite is built into all of our systems for a good reason.
I wanted to shift gears a little bit to a solution. So a lot of people in my audience and people who are from Denver are saying, I don't like that my mayor did this thing, you know, they read the links and everything that I wrote about the specific statutes that he broke. How do, like, how do you hold somebody like that accountable?
Well, there's sort of two layers to the objections that people have to the way this has gone down. One is just, we don't want the mass surveillance, right? And on that, again, just keep, we will get to vote on this. And frankly, council also has a lot of legislative authority. And so now that the mayor has like sort of made his choice and signed at least this next extension and we're stuck with these cameras for another five months, please be talking to us because there are things that council can do and we, again, we are listening.
If you could just say your email again.
Yeah, seriously. Sarah with an H dot P A R A D Y at denvergov.org. You can also really easily get in touch with me by Googling that, you know? And so I think people often, I remember before running for this office, kind of in the time leading up to that, being really focused on kind of the federal government and even the state government. I spent a lot of time trying to impact things in state legislature. And I was not paying a lot of attention to Denver and it's such a mistake because so much of what impacts the state today, not only does it happen here, but it's easy to get heard by us. Like again, we reply to emails, you know? So that's one thing. And then if the concern is more about the mayor having sort of subverted council in this way, you know, I don't want to express the opinion that he definitely violated the charter. Like I'm not going to get into whether at what point, leading right up to the line there, you know, is a, no court has ever litigated that. So staying away from that. I agree that the spirit of that is like not right. And the like cliche, but true answer is that this is why we have elections, you know? And we're all up for reelection in two years. And so, less than two years. So that's, you know, that may feel like a long time to wait, but that is the beauty of not letting us keep our seats for any longer than people want us to.
What do you feel I failed to mention or that's important that I haven't brought up about this that you'd like to talk about?
Such a nice question. I mean, I, it's such a big topic, but I think I do want to also remind people that it's not settled that we even have the fourth amendment. That it's not a violation of all of our fourth amendment rights in Denver to be doing this. So, and I mean literally us. I mean, if you drive in Denver, your image has been taken by these cameras. And as you know, from your conversation with Councilmember Segal and others, it's an unsettled area of case law where the law just hasn't kept up with the technology. These are not akin to plain view searches of like a gumshoe cop going in.
Thank you so much for taking the time and answering all my questions. I really appreciate it. I'm sure people watching really do. Thank you.
Thanks.